Evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's City Council meeting, the first one of the new year. Tonight's meeting will be opened and led in prayer and pledge by Councilmember John Millen. For those of you who would like to join in, if you'd like to bow your heads. I'm sorry. I have to apologize. No, we have, there is, though that is my mistake. Councilmember Forbes has brought Pastor...
Pastor Sue Hand.
To Hand.
From Zion Lutheran Church.
And I, at the last minute, asked John, forgetting Pastor Hand would be...
I'm sorry.
No, no, thank you for that. I think Pastor Hand should be... You're all right, councilmember?
Certainly.
Pastor Hand, welcome. We would appreciate you opening the meeting with the prayer and the pledge.
Thank you, thank you. It is so good to be here. Let us pray. May God make your coming year a happy one, not by shedding you from all sorrows and pain, but by strengthening you to bear it as it comes; not by making the path easy, but by making you sturdy to travel any path; not by taking hardships from you, but by taking fear from your heart; not by granting you unbroken sunshine, but by keeping your face bright even in the shadows; not by making your life always pleasant, but by showing you when people and their causes need you most, and by making you anxious to be there to help. God's love, peace, hope, and joy abound in you and your loved ones in this year ahead. Blessings in 2020. Amen.
Amen.
And now let us turn towards the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor Millen, and thank you, Councilmember Forbes, and my apologies to Councilmember Millen. Perhaps you will handle the next meeting.
I certainly do, sir.
Thank you. All right. Can we have roll call, members?
Councilmember Forbes.
Present.
Councilmember Bryant.
Present.
Councilmember Bench.
Present.
Portem Moore.
Present.
Member Scherzer.
Present.
Councilmember Millen.
Present.
Councilmember Balls.
Present.
Councilmember Ostache.
Present.
Mayor Clark.
Here.
We have nine members present, zero absent.
Thank you. Today, I want to welcome everyone to tonight's meeting and say to you that because this is a public meeting, we ask that all members of the audience please remain quiet and refrain from speaking, interrupting, or otherwise disrupting the meeting. Also, I remind everyone to please silence all electronic devices at this time.
Thank you, Mayor. I have an announcement that City Hall will be closed on Monday, January 20th, for the Martin Luther King Holiday. And then the next regular council meeting will be the annual strategic planning session on Friday, January 24th, at 9:00 a.m., and it's at the SVRC Marketplace in the lower level press room. The deadline to sign up for public input for that meeting will be Thursday, January 23rd, at 11:00 a.m. That takes us to public input.
Thank you. I want to, again, welcome all those who have signed up to address council tonight. Hearing from the citizens we represent is very important to us. We ask that you speak slowly and clearly so we don't miss what you have to say. When called to the podium, let us know if you'll be speaking solely for yourself or on behalf of a group. All speakers will have a three-minute limit, which is timed by the clerk, so please be sure to cover your main points first. We ask that your presentation be courteous and respectful to the members of the public present, to the citizens watching SGTV, and to the council so we can give serious consideration to your concerns. All follow-ups will be referred to city staff. Thank you.
We have one sign-up for tonight's meeting, and that was George Burton.
Welcome, Mr. Burton.
Good evening. Good evening, Mr. Manager. You and I go a long way back, don't we, Mayor?
Sure do.
Okay. Just a little background, my name's Harold Burton, and I spent 20 years on the Saginaw Fire Department. The last thing I want to be... I've got a question for you. Anyone have an idea of when we're going to repay the state street within the city limits? It's kind of an eyesore considering that you're trying to improve it.
We really can't answer those kinds of questions. It's not a question on Superior...
Okay.
I'm sure the manager can get back, or the city staff can get back to you.
What I'm here about is the pension system that the police and fire, the ones of us that are still alive, are under, not the new hirees. But I'd like to know, I've been told that the proper amount going into that pension system to keep it solvent is 73%. The city of Saginaw has chose to, and the least amount that they can put in is 63%. How did we get to only putting 40% into that pension system?
Again, I can't, we don't answer those questions. That's for staff to get back.
Right. I would like some answers as to why we're playing with that pension system. There aren't many of us left alive, but I want to make sure that I, my wife doesn't have to worry about it, or any other firefighter that work for the city has to worry about that. And I know you're not going to answer me, and the city manager's going to have to look at it. He'll do a good job, but the ones that are on pension would really like to know why we're doing that with the police-fire pension system that is run by MERS.
We understand. As I said, we'll refer that to the manager, and I'm sure you'll get a response.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, sir.
Yep.
Madam Clerk?
Mayor, that takes us to the remarks of council.
Well, today, well, before we start, I want to remind councilmembers of the three-minute limit, and today we begin with Councilman Balls.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Evening, citizens, and everybody here that's here for the City Council meeting this evening. And we don't have a lot to say, but I would definitely like to wish everybody a happy New Year and a happy decade. I believe 2020 is going to be a turning point for not only the city of Saginaw or the state, but the United States of America, too. I'm really looking forward to what's happening this year. I just happened to have retired January 31st for the second time from Saginaw staying gear, or next year, and I'm looking forward to my next job, working with the youth here in the city of Saginaw in some form or fashion. I belong to an organization called Youth Bill, and we have, we're going to have some extremely exciting news to introduce to the city of Saginaw through the next coming months, where we will be working with youth again. So I'm really excited about what's 2020 is going to bring to the city of Saginaw. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Millen.
Thank you, Mayor Clark. I wanted to mention some very good news. For those of you who remember, there was a project, the Lee Commons, trying to raise funding to finish out some of the renovations at the Lee Mansion. They met their fundraising goal. They raised $25,000, and that made them eligible for a matching grant through the state of Michigan. And I just thought I would point out, that is exactly one of the reasons the council voted to transfer that into private hands. It made them eligible for both that type of fundraising and the matching grants available. I wanted to offer my congratulations in the new year to Michael Webster. He happens to be with us this evening. He was re-elected as the Chair of the Saginaw County Board of Commissioners, and also his compatriot Carl Ruth is re-elected as the Vice Chair. And I hope that the leadership of these two City of Saginaw resident commissioners will lead to an early decision on the new animal control building site within the city of Saginaw. Lastly, the city of Saginaw, it's a new year, and we're hiring. If those who are interested in city positions would check our website, we've had some recent retirements of long-term employees. There are a number of different types of openings. Obviously, some of our seasonal work is not until the spring, but we are open for business in the new year. And that's my remarks for this evening.
Thank you. Councilmember Scherzer has indicated she would pass already, so I will move on to Mayor Portem Moore.
Good afternoon, everybody. First of all, I'd like to wish everybody a happy New Years. I hope that your holidays were blessed, and everybody got what they wanted for Christmas. I wanted a puppy. I didn't get one. But that's neither here nor there.
Careful what you wish for.
I want a puppy, not a big dog, a little dog. I've got some events that are happening. Jennifer Acosta, along with some other investors, are coming to Saginaw on Wednesday, the 29th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. They're doing a workshop. It's, well, I'm sorry, not Saginaw, it's Saginaw Valley State University at Curtis Hall. All of the council people, you have the information in front of you. She also is doing a workshop. These workshops are on making a small-scale development possible in your community. So for those who really want to keep their areas up, and might think they want to buy a house to renovate, this might be a good way to go and see how the professional people are doing it, because these workshops are free as far as I know. She's got the one on January 29th, from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. at Curtis Hall at Saginaw Valley State University. I know that that one's free. Then she has another one, it's called Small-Scale Developing Workshops: Building Something Needed in the Place You Love. It's going to be Thursday, Thursday, February 27th, at SVIC, at the SVIC Center in the ballroom, and I think that there might be a small fee for it, but anybody that might be interested, I need you to give me a call, and I will ask more detail or get more information about it. Little quiet holiday, that's good, because we figure coming into January, it's a lot of decisions and a lot of work that we have to do. So I'm asking all citizens, that's on the sound of my voice, if you have any complaint, I would love to have you come to council. Don't sit home and think that we can read your mind. Please come to council. Please find one of us and let us know. I'm not saying that we're miracle workers, just like the gentleman that spoke, and he left too soon. That's a valid point. I mean, had he talked to somebody, maybe we could have done something earlier. But for our citizens, this is the year of restoration. That was the word for 2020, the year of restoration, which means that we want to restore our city. We want to take our city back. We want to claim victory in the city of Saginaw. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Bench.
I will pass.
All right. Councilmember Bryant?
Good evening. Happy New Year, everybody. We have a good-sized audience. It's always great to have folks who are concerned and have questions and concerns about what's going on in the city. I had a few meetings that went over the holiday. Again, was not feeling good, but was able to kick it. But tonight, we had a meeting with the New Ezekiel Project, with the Education Task Force. Extremely beneficial. I'd encourage you guys to go, it's the first Monday of each month, and I can forward that message to you. But it's really important that we attend, of course, focusing on our schools as well. I had the opportunity to attend yesterday's NAACP meeting. It was really exciting. Yesterday was Jubilee Day, celebrating the abolition of slavery, and that was phenomenal, because along with Jubilee Day, they also had presentations from many of the students from local schools. So they got up and did interpretive dance, they had poems that they were reading, they did quite a bit of singing, so it was good to be there and celebrate that event with our NAACP local branch here. I want to send my condolences to the longest-living city retiree, his family. It was Henry Wakowski, passed away, and he was 101 years old. 101 years old, and was still going strong up until this last week, as we entered 2020. So I want to send condolences there. They lived on Hosmer Street, but as 101, that's amazing. I'm going to be riding the bus this week with Jamie, hopefully Director Glenn Stefans of Stars. It's something that I did in the summertime, and we handed out bottles of water, but we're going to have cocoa. I'm not sure about coffee, because I only drink decaf. But we're going to get out there and talk about some of the things that are going on in the city, and I tell you what, there's not a better place to talk with someone aside from when they're trying to ride a bus. They're either going to get groceries, they're trying to get to work, trying to wrangle their kids from this place to that place, so it's always good to have those conversations on the bus, so it's super cool. They also have a glove and hat drive, and I will let Jamie talk about that, but really touched my heart. If you go onto their social media page, you can see there was a little boy who spoke at the board meeting, and his desire was to help people with gloves and hats. So if we could all stop over there and make our presence known, we know that a lot of these folks, they're not bus shelters, so a lot of people are standing outside. Something I experienced working in Saginaw schools, is that people are standing on corners, they're walking four, five, six blocks, you know, as we shut down more of our schools in the city, transportation definitely becomes an issue. So I'm going to stop over there this week and hang out with her in between meetings with our CDBG. We're getting ready, and we're amped. I see our books here. I think during my time, I've only missed a couple meetings. They're extremely informative about the nonprofits in the Saginaw area. If you wanted to know what does Interlink do, what does United Way do, those are the meetings that you want to attend. So they're going to kick off, I believe it's tomorrow, right here in this room at 5:00, and we'll also meet on the 13th and the 15th as well. So if you want to join us, we'll be here.
Thank you. Councilman Forbes?
Oh, my goodness, so many things to cover. First of all, it's so nice to see you all after a long, nice holiday season that was nice and restful, I think. Pastor Sue and I worked together at the Ezekiel Project, and I'm really thankful to have her here. I'd like to invite my fellow councilmembers and the public to the Great Lakes Bay Hispanic Leadership Festival graduation on January 30th, at Saginaw Valley, at 6:00 p.m. I'd love for us to have a table together, so let me know if you're interested. Tickets are $30. Their guest speaker is Loida Alatapia, Director of Public Relations for the Michigan Secretary of State. And just to touch on what Amir Portem Moore mentioned, I've attended the Jennifer Acosta Incremental Development Seminars, and they are really a great event. I encourage folks to attend. We need developers for projects, large and small, and they really cover that vastness. And so, so don't think that you can't do it. Go to the seminar and learn a little bit more. Father Joe Shabel passed away on Christmas Day, and I wanted to send my condolences to his friends and family. He was an incredibly kind man, and he had a huge impact on this community, especially the Hispanic community, and he has changed us all, and so his mark will be left on our city forever. I'm safe to say that. Congrats to Commissioner Michael Webster with his renewed chairmanship. It's good to see Jason Thompson in the audience as well. I look forward to working with you both and your tables in 2020 and beyond. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Ostache.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, and it's a welcome and happy New Year, and it's good to see familiar faces back in the crowd. I know there's a lot of people up at home, too. Just what Jamie was just talking about, and what Brendan Moore was just talking about, too. I've also attended Jennifer's workshops, and they are really good, and I was just going to add one more thing to that, too, is that even if you're thinking of starting up a small business, they actually do, part of their workshop is to getting your performance done. So it is a really good thing that she puts on, so I'm going to put that out there as well. Also, just one thing, it came across, and I just want to let people know, I did put this on my Facebook page, and people were making comments on it, they were happy that I did. But Habitat for Humanity is going to be doing some home maintenance workshops, and you can get more information from that. You can call this phone number, 989-753-5200, extension 210. You can also get this on my Facebook page, which is Bill Ostache, Saginaw Michigan City Council. But some of the programs that they're going to be doing for the month of January is just basic home repair, interior repairs, plumbing's one and two, how, energy savings for your home, financial management workshops, window and screen repair, which is always a big thing that I always heard, especially when I was serving on the Historic District Commission, because people have old windows, and they're trying to figure out how to make them efficient and restore them again, as maybe as to pose having to spend money and putting vinyl or something in. Some of the classes coming up in the future to watch for is going to be furniture and floor, fire and security, bug prevention, and other things like that. So I just kind of want to put that out there, and like I said, again, you can get more information from the phone number I gave you, or just visit my Facebook page, or even on their website, and you can get information for that. So thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. As far as I have, most of what I would have had has been covered.
Yeah. Councilmember Balls?
He started, didn't he?
Yeah.
Oh, yes, he did. Oh, I'm so sorry. I'm sorry.
You did, you had a second chance, is that it?
We're all a little lost. I'm sorry, Mayor.
Okay. I often screw up, but that one I got right. All right. Most of what I would have had to say has been covered, so the only things I do want to say is congratulations, Councilmember Balls, on your retirement, and we're looking forward to your future endeavors. And happy New Year to everybody, and that's it.
Well, Mayor, that puts us at the consent agenda, or reports from the manager.
Yes.
He's the first to meet.
Ready? Manager, we are ready.
So first, I will address what the personal appearance said, because I don't have to research that. You may remember from the audit, actuaries determine our contribution to our pension fund. MERS Pension Fund, it's actuarially determined contribution. Since I've been with this, so it's not a percentage, it's not 75% or 6, we decided to do 63%. They tell us how much to put in. Since I've been with the city since 2009, we have never failed to put in the actuarial determined contribution. So we've always put in what they've said. Now, you can argue about the assumptions that the actuaries use, which we don't determine those either, those are determined by MERS. So we've never put in less, and if you look at the audit, page 46, the last three years, we put in additional contributions beyond what the actuaries had required us in 17, $1 million, 18, $2 million, and another million in 2019. So we've been going beyond the actuarial determined contribution. And also, I would add that we also established the OPEB Fund last year, if you recall. So we've been doing, I think, a lot better with those retirement expense. I'm not sure where that came from. Building on what Mayor Portem Moore said, I would encourage citizens to call our departments first, because they can get the information faster that way. If the speaker had contacted my office or Human Resources, we would have been able to provide them this information immediately, I think, because most of our staff know this information. And with that, I will also mention that Chief Ruth is having a press conference this Thursday at 11:00 at the Police Department. So councilmembers are invited to attend, if you wish to attend. If you go to the lobby in the Police Department, they'll direct you where, and I think we're going to have a pretty full house anyway, because Chief has invited a lot of the federal law enforcement, prosecutors to speak as well, but you're all welcome to attend, and I think you'll see some very good statistics presented by Chief Ruth.
That is at 11:00?
11:00 Thursday. It's in the, on the second floor of the Police Department, but I think if you go into the desk at the Police Department, they'll be able to direct you and buzz you in, just let them know who you are and that you're there for the press conference. And finally, I wanted to mention the presentations that we'll have at the strategic planning session that was mentioned by the clerk. One will be presented by the city attorney, and it will be an overview of potential marijuana ordinances. And I want to emphasize that we want to include discussion with the Planning Commission, the zoning, the DDA, Brownfield Redevelopment Authority as well. One of the requirements of the redevelopment-ready communities is that we have a joint meeting with those different committees with the city every year, so this is a good opportunity, because it's something that they all have to work on as well. So I think it's a great opportunity to do that. We did that last year, and hopefully we'll have a good discussion with them, and we'll have them, during that period, we'll have them seated with councilmembers. Another presentation that we'll have is a 2020 Elections Overview, and Clerk Santos will do that. For those of you who didn't know, our city clerk Janet Santos was selected by the Michigan Secretary of State to participate in a committee that reviewed all of those changes and made recommendations to the secretary about how to implement that. So I think that's great for the city of Saginaw, because I don't, I don't know how many they picked Janet, but I...
There was 12.
12, so 12 throughout the state. That's excellent. So she'll be presenting that, and I believe Councilman Bryant asked for that presentation. We will also be having a presentation called Planning for the Future. It's presented by Scott Weber, who is the Director of Alternative Energy Solutions from Consumers Energy, and a lot of that deals with electric vehicles and servicing those and potential there. And then finally, we'll have a presentation of our public safety study. And that's at the end of the day, and it's going to be a lot of numbers, so hopefully people will stick around for that. But it's presented by Doug Chels, who's the Director of Quantitative Analysis for the Center of Public Safety Management. And after that, we can discuss any of the items or future issues that council would like to talk about. And that concludes the management update.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
You are now at the consent agenda, Mayor.
All right. Are there any except, well, first of all, the agenda has been available at City Hall on the city website and on SGTV, channel 191. Are there any exceptions to be noted by the clerk?
Could I have an exception for four, for discussion purposes, please?
Number four. Any other exceptions to be noted? Any other exceptions? Hearing none, can we have a motion to approve items 1 through 3 and 5 through 12?
Some move, support?
It has been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? It was moved by Councilmember Bench, seconded by Councilmember Bryant.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes. Any further discussion? Hearing none? Oh, I'm sorry, yes, Mr. Councilman.
Just a question, since it's been a little while. On item 10, where we're adopting the resolution to approve the rehab of the Norman Street Bridge, was this due to...
He's got to make a change. He's got to make a motion.
Right. If you're going to do that, it should be as an exception. Oh.
It is an exception.
You asked the questions, I wasn't sure. I'm sorry, yes. Any discussion on the approval as a group?
Oh, okay. No, no. And it's not important enough to...
Just accept on it. Just a question. So is there any discussion on the motion to approve the items 1 through 3 and 5 through 12? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Carry. We have exception four, Madam Clerk?
Yes, and number four is approve the professional services agreement with Full Steam Social Media for $19,000 to provide weekly social media stories, photos, and related content for the city of Saginaw, and that was Councilmember Forbes.
Councilmember?
So I had just asked a few questions of the city manager, and I was wondering if you wouldn't mind covering them, or should I just summarize?
You can summarize.
Okay. So basically, we had a contract previously with AMPM, and things were severed with them a couple of meetings ago, and we went out again to see if we could have anyone else pick up this kind of social media work. And I just had a couple of questions about how that process went, and it looks like there was a, there was a few different vendors that were talked to, is that right?
Well, when we looked at AMPM, we looked at a few vendors at that time, and then when we did cancel that contract, because there were some items that we weren't getting that we expected to get out of that, that we felt were deliverables. So this is a project that's worked on primarily by Vicki Davis and Yolanda Jones. So they met with an individual who I had met with previously, who does a lot of this kind of work all around the state, and he does work with redevelopment-ready communities through MEDC. We met with that individual, but we thought that Full Steam Media would give better, would be, work better with some of our other work that we're already doing. Full Steam Media works with Riverfront Saginaw Group, so they've been doing a lot of the stories. So we were able to evaluate from that project, the changes that they've had with Riverfront Saginaw, the numbers of followers that they've had have increased exponentially since Full Steam Media started doing that work. So we wanted to see if we could have some synergy there, and have similar types of stories that he's doing with that, only citywide, you know, put in, out to neighborhoods and other businesses beyond that Riverfront Saginaw. And we have it, this is a six-month contract going through July, so that'll give us a chance to evaluate that and see if we want to continue. Also, with this package, Phil, who is the primary person at Full Steam, will be updating our website and doing that for us as well, and that's something that AMPM wasn't going to do. It was kind of in the original contract, but they weren't really doing anything with it. So I think that'll be an advantage for us, and then we'll get to evaluate the work in July.
I've seen his work on Riverfront Saginaw. I've seen his work on Riverfront Saginaw, and it's great. Just, were there any Saginaw-based companies considered?
When, the mayor and I are both involved in Riverfront Saginaw in the, kind of the executive committee. And when they reviewed it, they did talk to a couple of other, at least one Saginaw-based. There aren't a lot that are necessarily based in the city, but there is another individual that they did get, get a proposal from, we're aware of it. And that was quite a bit more money even than, than what Full Steam was. But we will also, and I know you asked this as well, we've done work with Local Videographer as well, and we do plan to continue to do that because we think there's different pieces to this marketing campaign that we can do, so.
Lots of stories to tell.
Yes. And we plan to do work with other people throughout the year.
And then, so we are receiving some contributions from some outside entities to support this work, right?
Oh, the DDA is providing a subsidy to it.
Yeah, that's great. So it's a partnership. All right, I just wanted to make sure that that was, that all those details were, were given to the public. So that's all. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the item four.
All right. It's been moved and supported. Any discussion further on item four? Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Carrie, Madam Clerk?
Mayor, we are now at Boards, Commission, Committee Reports.
Are there any reports of city boards and commissions? Councilmembers, any? Oh, yes, Councilmember Bench.
Yes. The City School County Liaison Group met on December 19th. It had been a while since we had gotten together, but we do meet quarterly now. So we did set a schedule for the year and standing agenda items, and are committed to moving forward throughout the next year and are looking forward to our new members that I think will be appointed soon on the school board side. There will be some turnover, I think, soon. Overall, it was a productive meeting, and I think it went well. However, concerns were expressed at the meeting and since, particularly over social media, over some offenses and hurt feelings that have been created, strained relationships that have been created that were otherwise strong relationships between members of the school board and, and the council. And these hurt feelings primarily center around the creation of the C-7 group. And it's my understanding that the C-7 group has met four or five times since June. I'm not sure that any of us really know or could give an accurate explanation to anyone who asked as to what the purposes of the C-7 group. And I don't believe there's ever been a conversation here at the table about its purposes. But I think the time has come that we have to have that conversation because we've got some upset that's been created that I think can be fixed, but needs to be fixed and addressed. And at that point, I guess I would ask our mayor to perhaps give us an update on what the C-7 is and help us to understand what the committee is so we can all be on the same page, all have the same information, and all move forward in an effort to heal some of the upset, I think, that's been created. And that's all I have.
Any other reports? Any other reports? Lee?
All right. As far as Councilmember Bench's request, this is not the time for that, but we will have to pursue. I will get back with you.
And Mayor, sorry, if you could include the process in starting a new commission, you know, how does that, is it just a ad hoc? You know what I'm saying? Because I know we have some that have been ad hoc commissions, and then they turned into, like Riverfront, I think started in 2000, and then that was ad hoc, and then it became an official. I don't think that this is an official, the C-7 is an official city board or commission. But I am curious as to what the process would be to start a group? Can any of us just start a group? So if that could be put in, I think that would be good. I'm not saying that it's bad. I definitely support the School County Liaison, City, City School County Liaison. I support that 100%. And I don't want there to be any question of that. But I do have a question as to the process in developing new committees. I did previously have a question about the Corridor Commission two strategic plans ago. And how, I mean, just how does that process work? If that could be included in that, I think that would be great, just to shed some light on that, if that's something that you alone have the sole authority to do, or if a council member does, or how does that process work?
I think I will discuss, the manager and I can discuss that and address it. Okay? All right. Anything else under this item? Madam Clerk?
You have a council.
Oh, I'm sorry, I did not see your hand. Yes. Councilmember, Mayor Portemore?
I think that, I've heard, I've sat here, and basically, I always talk about transparency. It is important that we all become transparent. We won't get anything accomplished with anybody if we don't. Same thing with the council people and myself. Our job is to work for the people. And we need to keep that in mind, all of us. The community comes first. So when we, when we have to go through a debate with one another, that's not, that's not what we really want to do. What we want to do is, we want to keep the peace. Because Saginaw's got enough problems outside of this table.
We don't need to create them.
That, we don't need to create nothing from this table. So my suggestion, all of us sitting up here, yeah, maybe we might need to have what we call the powwow, so that we can all get on one page, because we're not, we're not going to go forward if we continue to bump heads. And that's not what I got on council for. I didn't get on council to bump heads. I'm on, I'm the president of the Municipal League. I'm over 521 villages and cities in the state of Michigan. I don't do this with them. I listen. I listen because I don't have all the answers, and I need them. I need the community, I need Saginaw, to make me feel like I'm doing something. And if I'm not, so be it. But I'd like to see all of us. I don't know when we can do a city manager, I guess this is a question on you now. Do we call a special powwow session? That we can just all talk? Because 2020, I said it before, it's the year of restoration. It is not the year of friction. If we got friction from this table, we're not moving forward, young people. We're not. So opposed to us having that friction, City Manager, I know I'm probably so out of order, so out of order, but the staff that I got at Nashing and Ann Arbor, MML will tell you, Brenda, it's not your typical anything. I would just like to see us come together. And if we can arrange it. I know that you've got some meetings that you still need to schedule with us, and I hope that we continue that. And I hope that we, as a council, in 2020, look, we got enough worrying about the presidential election. We got a whole lot of stuff we got to worry about. So if we all can come together and get on one accord, I'm for that. So City Manager, Mayor, I don't know how we can do it.
Would you care to make a motion?
I make a motion.
For a committee of the whole, and let council debate that point?
I, I make a, I make a motion that we do a committee of the whole, so that we can get restored and get peace back on this council.
Is there a second for?
I didn't know we didn't have no peace on this council. I don't know what's going on. I don't want to be admitted, I don't even know what's going on before I get there. What the hell's going on?
Basically, basically, it's just some concerns, and this is a way of us getting the concerns out. Some people have concerns, and if we don't, opposed to us throw daggers at this table, which I'm not going to be a part of, we need to talk about it. We can do it in public. I would rather do it to where we are could be simple, versus us doing it out here shouting like we was just getting ready to do. Know it was getting ready to be ugly. So I got a motion on the floor.
Is there a second? It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion on the motion for a, as I understand the motion, the purpose of it would be to discuss councils' relationship with each other?
I do just want to preface, it would still be an open public meeting, the same as any council meeting.
Right. But it'd be a, this would be a committee of the whole, is the motion. Councilmember Bench?
I asked for you to provide us an update on your activities with this group. That's all. I just want information. I don't feel like I have the same information. I don't feel like Clint has the same information, Jamie knows the same things I know, John knows more than I do. I, I think there's, there's a lack of transparency. I don't see why we need a committee of the whole. I love you, and I know what you're trying to do, and I don't think anybody's throwing daggers or yelling. But I've had private conversations, and I've made my concerns known. And I've also made my concerns known and said that at some point. If these concerns continue to be brought to me from our partners at the school board, this would be a topic I would bring up at the table. So I don't see why we need to schedule another meeting. I just want to know what the purpose of this committee is and have everybody on the same page, because nobody knows. And it is creating needless frustration on relationships that are otherwise solid. That's all. And I'm not talking about relationships here at the table, I'm talking about our relationship with the school board, which is an important relationship to maintain. You know, I mean, we don't, why wouldn't we want to be friends with these folks? And I don't think there's any reason why anybody here doesn't wish to be. I just think that the way the City School Liaison has been handled and the rollout of this other group that we still don't completely understand, if we all understood, perhaps the feelings wouldn't be nearly as hurt.
Any other discussion? Any other discussion? All right. All in favor of the motion? So decide by saying aye? No? All those opposed?
Read the motion over, please.
It isn't written, but the motion, as I understand it, Councilmember, Mayor Portemore, you can correct me, is to conduct a committee of the whole for the purpose of discussing the issues raised here at the table at this, right now regarding, regarding any lack of transparency or issues between the school district and, and the city council. All right? Does that, does that explain everything? Okay. Now, I've asked already for the vote in favor. Are there any opposed?
Yes, I'm opposed.
So we have, well, everybody's got a vote, we got to have something one way or the other. We can have a roll call, that's fine. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Balls?
Yes.
Councilmember Oystash?
Yes.
Councilmember Forbes?
Yes.
Councilmember Bryant?
Yes.
Councilmember Bench?
No.
Mayor Portemore?
Yes.
Councilmember Scherzer?
Yes.
Councilmember Mellon?
No.
Mayor Clark?
Yes.
We have seven yes and two no's. Motion is approved.
All right. Just the manager, if you'll make the arrangements.
I thought the, this meeting is to find out what's going on. Can everybody don't want to know? I understand that.
Well, it's been voted, there's, there's approval, and we will.
You could just do it now. That's what I'm saying. Why vote yes on a committee of the whole?
All right. Any further, we were on the matter of boards and commissions, and is, are there any other reports? All right. Hearing none, next matter, Madam Clerk?
Your miscellaneous business.
Is there any, technically, that's what we should have been on, but is miscellaneous business?
Yeah, I'm just curious, do the city manager or anybody know how many man-hours and how much money is, is going to be invested into the lead mansion when it's all final and done? Give me a final count on how much it's going to cost, are we trying to set out?
I mean, it's a private project, so I don't have that number, but maybe as they get further in the project, I'm sure that one of the individuals involved would be happy to come and give a report on how much they've raised and the amount of work. A lot of the work is volunteer, and I think Councilmember Forbes worked, does some work with them, and Councilmember Bench may as well, so they might be able to give you kind of information too.
There was some demolition money that was involved in that building that we had put up to tear it down, right? Did they get that money too? Did they get that?
No. We had a grant that was years ago that was dedicated to the purchase and demo, and that was probably 2008 or '09, somewhere in that range. But that grant period ended, so I believe that money funded another project. So there wasn't any grant funds left with it. Anything else that we would have done with the building would have been from the, probably the general fund demolition?
So did we purchase it?
We did purchase it with, I believe it was a.
It was an EDI grant that we had.
Thank you.
I got something else.
All right.
I want to wish Councilmember Balls a happy birthday. It was something else I wanted to say. It's tight getting on.
Thank you. Anything else? If you can't remember, we got, see, go ahead.
If you remember.
And I'd also like to congratulate Councilwoman Forbes. She did get awarded some scholarship money to the Municipal League, and I'm encouraging my fellow council persons, because you know we have a limited budget, I'm encouraging all of you to apply for some of the scholarships as well. But Jamie, congratulations. Though I'll see you at at least the next two conferences.
Yes, Councilmember Bryant?
Yes, I just want to invite everybody in the room and watching on YouTube. If you want to join me, my next community conversation will be Wednesday, January 15th, starting at 5:00, between 5:00, 5:30, and then we'll go till 7:00. It's going to be at Central Fire Station. We're going to be talking about the census, election 2020, and Proposal Three, letting copper rule, and also the road commissioner will be there to talk about what's going on over there, making sure we're all prepared on our county and state roads. But we'll get started over there at Central Fire Station, and we're going to have Five Alarm Chili. So two things I love to do is eat and talk about the city of Saginaw. So come and join me. I think they, over time, they've been pretty well attended. Last time, we made pasties, I know Councilman Mellon was there, I think they were good. He's still alive, so my cooking is not bad. So join me, I'm going to try to wrangle in Fire Marshal Martin too, maybe he'll help me make some chili and cornbread. So come on, it'll be Wednesday, January 15th, so hope to see you there.
Thank you. Anything else? Anything else? Is there a motion to adjourn? It's moved.
Support.
All in favor? Any opposed? Carrie, thank you.